...invitation by Reverend Jeff Chitwood of the Anchor Church out on Terry Street. Please rise.
Let's pray. Dear God, we come to you this evening, we give you thanks for the blessings that we have. And Lord, we ask for your blessings, and you might watch over all those citizens in Benita and surrounding areas dealing with the COVID virus that you will grant healing and strength as we work through all of this, Lord, that we may quickly see it just be taken away. I pray, Lord, that you'll be with the council members, I pray that you'll give them wisdom in the decisions they make, which impact the lives of others. And Lord, we thank you for the freedom we have as a nation, the freedom to gather together, and let us never take that for granted. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attorney, sir, will you lead us into the podium, please?
(Inaudible) the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just for...
Approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I just have one clarification. If anyone has an agenda packet that still retains an item eight H on the consent agenda, that has been pulled, that is on, that's on for the September 1st meeting.
I wish I understood what you said. You said H is out?
H, if it's on there at all. Mostly you should have updated packets that don't have it anymore.
So, here? He's saying that, see, H is gone, so he's good.
Okay. Okay, well, it's the mayor, I'm Rick Steinmeier, the current mayor of Benita Springs, and I really appreciate you all coming, taking your time to come and see your government in action, or inaction, let's say. We have a short agenda tonight. A lot of our people have COVID, are being, are being quarantined, and so we have a little unusual program tonight. So, welcome, and if you fill out a speaker's card, get your name printed properly, so Carly can record it for the minutes, and...
Mr. Mayor, we need to do roll call.
Huh?
Roll call, sir. Just give a roll call.
Roll call, yes, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Mr. Mayor, because we...
Okay, we have to approve...
Yes, we have to approve their attendance.
To council people and city attorney, or city manager on the phone?
Just the two council members.
This is the two council people. Do you have a motion?
Motion, a second for...
A second?
Second.
And roll call, please, Carly.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
And Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, now we got a public comment. I want to hear from you people, you came all the way down here. Come on, you held the microphone. You got four minutes each, if not more. I can give you more if you want it. Okay, thank you, sir. Identify yourself.
Yes, Ron George, and my purpose for approaching you today is, I'm a candidate, at least being considered...
I have trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry.
Are you closest to the mic?
Yes. I'm, I'm applying to be on the Technology Advisory Board, and so I wanted to come here and make sure I introduce myself. I'm a PhD analytical chemist, I've worked in the drug industry forty-some years, and been retired about two years, and basically retired, so I don't know if you have any questions or anything for me.
Okay, thank you, Ron George. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name's Kelly O'Cutso, and I'm here alongside other board members and members of the Benita Senior Center. And we have a vision to create community with joy and purpose, to connect and nourish and love all of our seniors in Benita Springs. We have a written proposal to share with the city and the council today to share our position and our purpose, so that we could make the old library our permanent home. We currently are serving upwards of about fifty members in the short time that we have come together to gather, and we have a lot of statistics from Dr. Tom Felke at FGCU that support the need for Senior Center in Benita Springs. So if you would like for me to share some of those with you today, I'm more than willing, but most of all, I would like to just note the presence of the members that are here with me today.
Could you have your members put their name and their address on a piece of paper, so we can make it, put that in the record somewhere? And go ahead and speak, introduce your friends or whatever, but I want to see the names and addresses of the seniors that, yeah, I guess you're here for the library, huh?
We are, we're here for the library. We're, we will share also, but we really wanted to make, want to make the library our home.
Introduce your members.
So would you like a complete list of our membership that we could share with city council, or would you like each person to stand up and introduce themselves?
Personally, I think it'd be easier if you, if you wrote down the name and then give it to Carly, so that she can...
Yeah, we have a complete list, we can email you, Carly, if that's okay? It's easier?
And if you have a presentation, please hand it to Ms. Adams.
We have a written presentation.
Anybody else from the seniors? Please come forward. Are you a senior yet?
Yes.
Oh, boy, time goes by, doesn't it?
Okay, this is very, very brief. Okay, there's been a group of dedicated individuals that have been pushing the county to give the old library to the city, and the city to accept it, in order to outfit it as a senior center. Okay, some issues did arise that made it a problem, but these are being addressed. The old library has enough space for both offices and a senior center. Please vote to accept the library, and later consider space for senior center. That's it. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Joe Gallagher, and I live 10290 Indiana Street, for the record.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go on the consent agenda, which has been approved by the city staff.
Motion to approve, second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purden?
Roll call.
Councilman Purden?
I heard, I had a whim, I heard a...
I think he said yes. Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Was there a motion made?
Yes, to accept and name accepted.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye, Mr. Purdon came on right after he passed.
Yeah, he did.
His name read up on the screen.
And Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
We're out of practice. This happens when we take a week off.
Hello, Mayor and Council Idens... I just want to make one comment, because somewhat reacting to the comments that were made earlier, it's my understanding that what we have included in this is the acceptance of the library, but it is the intent of the, of the city and the, and the staff to review all the needs of the city for functional space requirements, and including a proposal such as been presented today, but that's a process that hasn't, I don't think, even begun, so there's quite a few steps that have to go forward, and I assume that we will have a lot of input from all kinds of people, and all, all entities, and all organizations that have an interest in participating in the library. So it's, it's in process, I guess, is the answer.
Well, thank you very much, Amy, you took the words out of my mouth. The senior center has been talked about for many years, and there certainly is a need for it, but the city council has not had a formal discussion as to the use of the library in the future. Now, it's going to be used for the Mon... For that clinic, at least till the end of November. So we have some time to receive input as to how we can best use that library in the future. And you're, you're on my, you're on my list as a top priority, let's put it that way. There's other people, but I have seven, there's seven councilmen, and they don't have all the same ideas as to what's going to happen, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on it, and thank you so much, Amy, for, for so eloquently stating the situation. Thank you. Okay. We need another member to the Technical Advisory Board. We have had two applications. One application put his phone number on, and I was able to talk with him, and the other one didn't. Mr. Ron George is here. If you would like to ask questions, he could come to the microphone, come to the microphone, Ron.
And just to point out, Mr. Lowe did put his phone number on. If you look at his resume, it has his phone number.
Thanks, thanks for making a fool of me.
Not, I just want, you know, so he doesn't come back and say, hey, buddy.
Well, my mistake, I admit, I'm sorry. I looked at a different spot on his application, I didn't see it.
Well, this is, this is a technology position, and telephones are twentieth century at this point.
Anyways, any questions for Mr. George?
Why are you interested?
I'm, well, I'm retired now, so I've worked my whole life in science, and I would like to do things with the community, and I've got plenty of time on my hands at this point.
Thank you for coming and sharing.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Is the other applicant...
I don't know if the other applicant's here, and if not, you all each have your ballots, and I believe that the two members who are appearing remotely have transmitted their, their wishes, and so if you could all pass them down, we'll get you an answer on this real quick.
Writing a dissertation.
I like this spot, I can watch you all.
Add that to your resume.
The vote resulted in Ron George.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the results.
Motion to approve. Roll call.
We have Councilman Corey with the motion, and Councilwoman Amy with the second. Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
And Councilman Purden?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving along here. Discussion regarding possible technology enhancement throughout the city in light of potential federal funding. Mr. Corey, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sitting in the front row, I wanted to introduce Leo Delgado. Leo is with Converged Services from Port Lauderdale. Leo and I have worked together in terms of bringing fiber optic into Benita Bay. He has also worked with various other gated communities, both here in Benita Springs and in Lee and Cogurt County. If you've been following the news on Capitol Hill in Washington, the Senate has passed a infrastructure bill designed to cover things like roads and bridges and broadband. The broadband component of that infrastructure bill is about sixty-five billion dollars. That bill has been passed over to the House of Representatives, and the House has set a date of September twenty-seventh to have a final vote on the infrastructure bill, and it appears that that bill will be part of the budget resolution covering the FY22 federal budget. What the broadband portion of the bill does is to provide funds to improve connectivity to the internet and improved cell coverage, cellphone coverage throughout the United States. The city staff has recently seen phone calls from AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Summit Broadband, and others who are interested in trying to talk to the city about what they can do in terms of providing improved service. One of the reasons that we would want improved service is to take care of the underserved portion of our community, the kids especially, that I have talked about previously, that don't have the internet capability that they should have at home, and be able to connect their Google computers that have been provided by Lee County School District to the internet, and end up having to go to hotspots such as New Horizons to get connected so that they can do their schoolwork. The other thing we'd like to try to improve as part of the project that I envision for the city is to improve cellphone connectivity. If you drive around Benita Springs and look at your cellphones, your cellphones will vary from one bar to five bars, and it will vary in a very short distance, in terms of your being able to even connect a call, or you're unfortunate enough to have your call disconnected. We simply need to improve cellphone service in Benita Springs, and take advantage of what's coming down the road in terms of what they call 5G, or fifth generation, of cellphone technology. That technology is currently being put in place on the East Coast, but because of the federal legislation that's passing through Congress, monies will be made available to the carriers to do, to start doing additional projects, especially on the West Coast. That's why AT&amp;T and Sprint, T-Mobile, Summit Broadband, Hotwire are suddenly interested in providing services to the city. So, we have a need, and we certainly have providers that want to get involved in meeting that need, and there's two ways we can go about dealing with this. We can try to take on the evaluation of these providers and their programs and so forth on our own, we can try to learn how to apply for the federal grant money to fund these projects, or we can decide to contract for the expertise to do it. It's not dissimilar to renovating City Hall. I mean, we could have all picked up a hammer and nails and got some drywall at Home Depot and tried to do it ourselves, but we contracted with an engineering company to do the design and architecture work, and with a construction company to do the renovation. This is not that dissimilar. Broadband technology, 5G technology, is a utility, and what we're talking about is updating a utility in Benita Springs to keep our city being competitive, to get our kids, help our kids get a decent education, and to be viewed as someplace where businesses want to locate, who rely on that technology to run their businesses, whether it's the internet, or whether it's through 5G technology. Now, I just simply wanted to discuss this tonight, start answering questions. As I said, the legislation is not going to be finalized until September twenty-seventh. The way in which we would do this, if we chose to move forward, in my view, we would ask for assistance, and we would have those monies made available to us through a grant from the federal government for this kind of project. And so, on the one hand, we don't know what that federal, that final legislation's going to look like, but on the other hand, we need to start getting ready to make an improvement in internet connectivity and cellphone service in Benita Springs. So, I just wanted to have that discussion tonight, we'll, we'll move forward on it, especially when Mike and Jesse are here in the council meetings, and we all have a chance to discuss it together. But I did include in your packets just a information from a, from Converged Services, Leo's company, on a public-private partnership approach, and there was also something that was submitted by Hotwire, which covers about forty percent of the homes in Benita Springs. So I think it's something we need to start thinking about, it's something we can sharpen our pencils as we get further details about the legislation, and I would be happy to answer any questions, or if, and Leo can help me out if there's anything that's too tough. But I just wanted to get a general feeling on the part of council, is this something that you feel is appropriate that we get ready to deal with?
I've got a question. Did you pay Hotli, Hotwire to do Benita Bay, or did they charge you? How did you get Hotwire into Benita Bay?
We had a, we did not have grant money available. We paid, we entered into a ten-year contract with them to provide internet and telephone ser, I mean, television service, cable TV, and they installed the fiber optic to provide that service and deliver that service to us. Converged Services helped us through that process, helped us deal with not only Hotwire, but Comcast and Summit, and, and, you know, got us to the point where we felt that we could make a decision. The Pelican Landing went through the same sort of thing, and others gated communities in Benita Springs.
Would you know if there's Hotwire or Comcast in the Rosemary Park area?
I would assume that there, there is some availability in the Rosemary Park area through Comcast. I don't believe Hotwire has anything in there, but Comcast is, they're, what they've got in Rosemary Park is coax, and if you're going to improve cell service in Rosemary Park, you're going to have to, in some way, shape, or form, put in fiber optic. Now, Hotwire does have a foundation that they're, they have funded to improve connectivity with respect to underserved areas, and we have talked, I've talked to Hotwire, and they're interested in helping out people in Rosemary Park and others in Benita Springs who do not have good cell service. But what you see in Rosemary Park is the fact that some kids are trying to use their, their parents' smartphones to do their schoolwork, which is basically all based on the computer, and, and they don't have the, the cell service to be able to do it, so that needs to be improved. Amy?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, about availability to the students. I did happen to have a conversation with one of the school board members at Lee County, and she told me that every student that got, they all got the computers when they were going online, they also got a hotspot, so there should not be any students going to New, New Horizon, because they, they got their own hotspot to, from their computer, so they don't even need, you know, they do it through the satellite, you know, through the Wi-Fi. But that doesn't mean that they're not an underserved community, and we did recently pass a sidewalk and bicycle path along Rosemary Park, and Matt assured us that he was going to put in the fiber optic when he dug up the road. That was part of the agreement, so they were, they are going to have higher fiber optic, so, you know, as a city, we are trying to address the disadvantaged problem that you've addressed. I see this as two things. One is the 5G, I don't know how to call it, a spottiness of 5G or 4G or, or cellphone from, from all over the city, and it seems that, that the individual providers are trying to address that by putting up towers. As I mentioned once before, there's a hundred and twenty-six-foot tower going at the corner of Coconut and, and Forty-One, and we approved something on a church somewhere around Benita Springs, I forgot where it is, essentially. But, but, and then we have talked about the 5G, which requires just those little discs around, and they're not, they're not going to be on towers, they're going to be on some kind of places all over the place, which I don't know what the schedule is to put them in, and so I think that that's a whole technology that is rather complex, that we need some understanding about. And from my experience with Pelican Landing, and I don't remember if our community had a consultant, you know, to, to do it, or, or we just asked people, like, I, I recall that, like Century Link and Hotwire and Summit, they all made presentations to our board, and then they figured it out on their own. They struggled because they were, you know, you need a technology person to do that. So I am very persuaded by, I think what you're proposing is that you think that once we figure out what we want to do, that we should get a consultant to do it, because all these things are somewhat intertwined, and there's a whole policy, and with, with Pelican Landing, it wasn't just putting the, the fiber optic in and connecting, we committed in, as a community, to pay the monthly services that the... that the homeowners association pays. So, so I think that these providers, that's how they make their money. And we didn't pay any money to put in the fiber optic. Hotwire put it in. And I don't, I think our, I think our contract is five, five years, but I don't know. It's multiple years, maybe it's ten years. And there's an escalation for that. And as we are into that contract, we find that there's things that could have been improved if we knew when we started that we know now. And I think we're like three or four years into it. So, I definitely think that, that the, the proposal, that we should work with a contract. But if we're going to do that, a consultant, I think we should put it out to RFP. And maybe there's more people, not that there's anything wrong with the company that you presented, that you worked through, but there might be others. And I think we should, if we decide to go in that direction, we should put it out to RFP. And that's typically what we do in our city because we're, we're government light. We don't have, you know, we don't have a super duper IT person. I mean, we have IT person, but I don't know if they know about. Yeah, but they're not, they're not system experts. They're, they get us to work really well. So I'm not sure if they could, they might be able to help us. We have, we just appointed somebody to the technology committee. So, but I do think that it would be typical for us to hire consultants. So I'm all on board with that. But I do think that we need to explore what we're talking about in a little more informed basis about the systematic needs of the city. Because I don't know what the plans are to supply these little discs all over the city. I don't even know anything about it. But that's, there's questions that we should ask. But, you know, maybe when, after we spend a little bit of time understanding what we could possibly gain by doing it and what we would be committed to doing it. And if we just want to put in the infrastructure and then we just let everybody fend for themselves and connect with somebody whoever will connect to it, I don't even know if you could do that kind of thing. So, I mean, I have a million questions, but I, you know, I'm not a technology expert. But I think that it would be better if we sort of broke down the, the needs that you have articulated, understand the disadvantage. And from what I understand from the little paragraph that was in the infrastructure bill, that that's for disadvantaged. So, that funding might not be available for the broader community. There's all kinds of questions. But, you know, we also have a, a grants writer who's been unbelievably successful. Ellie, I don't know if she's, since it's not written, she probably doesn't know anything about this. Nobody knows what's in that bill really and how the fine print is. And until that's written, I don't think we can really plan too much. But I think it's fine to talk about this. I think we should talk about whether we would want to go in a consultant direction or whether we want to do it individually, like you said, and then have a better understanding of the 5G aspect of it, the, the citywide aspect of it, the disadvantaged aspect of it. And then, I mean, we have a pretty big project here, even if we haven't consulted. But that's my opinion from just looking at the little pieces of paper that we got today.
Well, thank you, Amy. Fred, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good project. I think we want to make sure that we do it in such a way that all the people that are in this kind of business have got the same footing. I would not want us to do something that locked up an area for one provider. If we, even if, even if we end up with an RFP, it'll be a duration of like five, six years. And then the other guys get to come in and make proposals too. Because if you don't do that, pretty soon, the people that you're with get a little lazy and you see things you'd like to add. But I think it's a good idea.
Laura, do you have any comments?
I think there are a whole bunch of questions that we need answered. And do we need a middle person consultant? I, I'd like to hear presentations from different companies, put out an RFP and see what the companies come back. And then if we are all kind of still wobbly about what it is implying, then a consultant, you know, like Mr. Delgado would be perfect.
Delgado. Mike, do you have a comment?
Yeah, we definitely have a need in the city to improve our technology. It'd be great if we could get on the forefront of the 5G technology. Everybody's, you know, doing everything over cellphones now. So, you know, it'd be best if we could do that. I, I do agree with Fred. It needs to be open to everybody. You know, so ideally, if we, if we can open up spots in the city to put up towers, or the smaller 5G towers. But it'd be open to everybody because competition is what keeps the price down on everything. You know, I wouldn't want to make a unfair advantage for any one company. The, as far as Converged Services, just reading over it, my, my main question I had is that they talk about, through the term of the program, had a one percent ownership of their partnership. So I, you know, wanted to know what that meant. Like if, if they're going to get one percent of the proceeds from, you know, rent, rental space of these towers or whatever. But I, I think it's a good idea. You know, I think it's the way we should be going to. We, I just need to look at it more. And probably the, the RFP's, you know, probably the best way to go to, to figure out who, who we wind up partnering with. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think of everybody, I think Mike Gibson pretty much nailed it. I would just add that, you know, technological advancement is important. I, I do feel we as a city could benefit from it. I also agree with part of what Amy said in the sense of, you know, trying to understand who's underserved and who's not. But just for the record, as somebody who lived directly in the middle of Rosemary Park, self-service is much more an issue directly in front of City Hall where you all are at right now. You're driving down Benita Beach Road and you're having cell service issues. So, I don't want to, I don't want to carry this over the finish line on the back of Rosemary Park under the idea that we're going to be helping the impoverished. But I do like the idea that technologically, we as a city need to stay on top of things. But RFP's definitely the way to go. And I think Gibson pretty much nailed it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. My turn. I believe in free enterprise and competition. And we're in the early stages of this, of this project. And I think we, we will receive more input from other companies. And I think they're going to be coming to us, telling, asking us to listen, look at their programs. And I thank you, Chris, for bringing this up because we do want the people in Benita to be connected as best as we can. But in the not-too-distant future, we could probably have a 6G or 7G. This, this technology keeps changing so much that I don't really want to get the city on the hook to pay for anybody. The scary thing is, I'm from the government, I want to help. I don't want the government to be a partner, to be a partner with any corporation. That's their problem. It's not our nickel. We shouldn't be involved with it. So, that's my opinion. Yes, Amy?
I just have one, I want to ask a question because you're the liaison to the technology committee. Do you think we could get some, you know, we could bring it, somehow bring it before them to ask them to get us started on how we should think about these things or the different criteria, you know, like focus on the 5G? What are the issues about 5G or what are the issues about internet access? Do you think they'd be capable of helping us there or, or not?
Well, they may, may well be. But I think you're dealing with, with technology, I think, that's a little bit beyond what the tech committee has been used to dealing with. If you don't mind, I might ask, because Leo's worked with some other cities. If Leo could just give us two minutes on what he's, his experience has been with the other cities?
Thank you. Good evening. Leo Delgado, the president, founder of Converged Services, Inc. We're a firm based in Florida, Florida. We have customers for the last 25 years representing property owners. So we're an independent consultant. We don't work for AT&amp;T, Comcast, Hotwire, Summit Broadband, or anybody else. So, from us, you, you get a totally unbiased opinion. And basically, there, there's a lot here. So, we work in it every day. Our team works in it every day. We have hundreds of years of experience and we're overwhelmed. So I do want to clarify that the money that with the, you know, that is being discussed in, in Congress right now will be, that's another 65 billion. But there's other billions of dollars that are available through the FCC. That's been allocated already. There's money allocated through the Department of Commerce, rural area. So there's billions of dollars available to the city. And it's a competitive environment. So you should get up to speed, hire somebody like us. We're not concerned about answering an RFP. We'd be happy to compete with whoever you would like for us to compete or returns a response to an RFP for you. But we, you have nothing to do. We're, basically the proposal we're giving you provides zero risk to, to the city. Because basically, what, what we're proposing is to apply for a plethora. By the way, we also have a lobbyist in, in Washington, DC, Amanda. I think it was part of the proposal. You'll see it when you review our proposal again. So we're actively applying and we love to work with the grant writer for the city as well. This particular lobbyist that we use, she happens to be from Florida. She was Senator Graham's Chief of Staff. And, and she's been a lobbyist. She's with a law firm for Florida, as it turns out as well. So this is what they do. They, they in and they out. And there's a lot of different things that not only have to do with serving the underserved, which is, it's an art of standing, it's a huge opportunity to, to do this. By the way, Lee County is building fiber between the 98 schools in Lee County. However, the fiber ends there. When these, when these kids go home, yes, they have the equipment to work, but they don't have the capacity, the capability to do their homework or to even be involved in a Zoom call like we are here today. So I, I do recommend that we be happy or others to be invited to provide information to the, the council as a whole or to their committees or, you know, people and maybe, because we, you're right. There's a lot of things here and it has changed. So it's not just one grant. By the way, Pelican Landing had the best consulting in the business because that was us. We, we handled consulting for Pelican Landing. We're very proud of the work we did there. We got you 50 cameras along the backside. We actually got the hi-hat to beam a internet to your little island you have off the coast of that. So we did, I think, a great job. Larry McPherson has become a favorite, I realize he's not a resident there anymore when he was president of the association. And we did the same thing in Benita Bay. We, we did it for a whole bunch of communities. And we do it nationwide. We have customers in Texas, California, Las Vegas, you name it, the east coast or whatever. So, and, and our approach is that we represent our clients. We do not represent AT&amp;T. We love to have our clients. And by the way, the concept would be to build an open network. This is not giving a Hotwire, AT&amp;T, or anybody else exclusivity. That can't, that's not even allowed in federal law. So the, the concept would be to get the funding from the federal. And some of that money, by the way, is going to.
Can you assist in actually writing the grant?
Absolutely. We, we have, if you look at a proposal, we have that and we'll work with. And that will be part of our service. It is a totally risk-free opportunity for you. We estimate that we're probably going to have to spend $250,000 just to get the grant, to get the study, to figure out what the city's needs are. We don't go to a city and say, you should do this. It is, Benita Springs is totally different than Sterro or Staples and, and every other community in, in Lee County. So we would get input from, from the community, from, from experts in the community, whether your IT people, any resources the city has to, and certainly be tied into Lee County. We, we've already made contact for that because they do a wonderful job of basically getting all 98 schools in Lee County tied together in one fiber network. It happens that somebody broadband won the bid for that. It could have been anybody. So our approach is, is the easiest for the city. You don't put up any upfront. We go and try to get that. And, and then we put out the bid in RFP. So basically, we're putting together the RFP and the funding for, for the, the whole system, what your needs are, your future needs are. It may be several different, you know, federal agencies that provide that.
Yes, sir. Can I interrupt? Your time is up. We're going to keep you in mind. We certainly have more research to do before we make a decision.
There's just a lot, yes.
And I appreciate you coming here from Fort Lauderdale.
Yes, sir.
You ever go to the elbow room there?
For many, many years, even when I was in college.
Yeah, okay. I used to live in Lauderdale. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your time. Be happy to, to work with the city anyway.
We'll be in touch for sure. Thank you. Okay, city attorney's report. Do you have anything for us, Derek?
I have nothing for you. I do.
Oh, come on.
Well, if you really, if you really want, on your, probably your September 14th meeting, you will, you will have a purchase and acquisition agreement for the Angler's Paradise piece for the northwest corner of the right-of-way for our quadrant study. So we're working on putting all that together for, for that meeting.
Well, that's progress. That's great. We need that property in order to make that quadrant work. Very good. Thank you. City manager, Ali, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, mayor and council. Lisa Roberson, if you would come forward. I know we have the presentation of the June monthly financial report.
Okay, Lisa.
Yes, hopefully IT can get it up for me. Did I come? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening.
Thank you now. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you our June financial report. Oops. I don't have a clicker here. Here we go. Okay, on the first slide you have before you, our general fund revenues. This is by type, revenue type, as of June 30th. So it's fiscal year-to-date. The most significant thing of this slide, in my opinion, is the fact that our abhorrent, our real estate taxes is 51% of our general fund. And you all recall, our general fund, this is just our, a regular recurring operating fund. So we like to look at that particularly for trends. That's what we rely on for our day-to-day operations, whatnot. So, very special to us with respect to our operational funding. The next largest is the state revenue sharing. That's the money we receive from the state, half-cent sales tax, revenue sharing. Also, it's, a lot of it's based upon our economic trends that we see, things that are happening at the state. So our economy has really been doing extremely well lately in the state. We are so fortunate. And you'll see that it is growing with respect to its percentages. So it's, it's really serving us well. And we have several other, others, but those are the two biggest ones. Real estate taxes, really the largest portion of our general operating fund, which is similar to a lot of other municipalities in the state of Florida. Next slide, we're actually doing a fiscal year-to-date comparison where we were, where we are now as of June 30, as compared to where we were last year at this, at June 30. Very consistent year-to-year. I do really like this slide. You will see a slight increase, as we were speaking about, the second revenue section there, state revenue sharing. Again, we're talking about how things are economically, has been doing pretty well for the state. So that's why you see this increase reflected. And a slight decrease, which we've talked about before, in our communication services tax. We've been looking into that. That's been something that's kind of statewide. Communication services tax can be quite discretionary. Some of the businesses, we think maybe some of the fluctuation with respect to usage, businesses use this if they're, if they're doing credit cards, if they're doing internet service, things of that nature. So with the pandemic, we think that may have had a little bit of a dampening. We'll watch that and we'll be looking at statewide trends as well. Our next slide.
Can you go back to, what, go back one slide?
I think I can.
Maybe not.
I'm going forward. I don't have a clicker here, so I'm not really.
Physical, physical, physical environment. Aye!
Physical environment.
What is that?
I closed it. I think I need IT.
Is that the climate change, or what have we got there?
We don't have a clicker, because I didn't click. Okay. Just, how do I go backward? They wanted- Physical environment. Mayor, you were asking what that is?
What it is and why we pay for it. A hundred thousand dollars?
A lot of these categories you'll see are dictated by the Florida state chart of accounts. So we have to use certain categories, and what that enables us to do for all of our reporting, that enables us to be comparative to other governments and to the state. Our data that we spend and collect, revenues and expenditures, gets rolled up into the state and bundled up so that they can do their big database about what everybody's spending and their trends. Physical environment's water. When you do all the, so if you see the spikes in that, that's where you're doing stormwater, your, you know, your areas like that, your stormwater services, your, any of your projects that are related to the water, clean water, and things of that nature, and stormwater, moving stormwater, processing, doing things like that.
So we had a stormwater ordinance that we just passed. It's only a hundred thousand dollars?
Excuse me? So which slide are you on? You're on the revenues? We're still on the general fund revenue. So which, are you on a particular slide number? Restricted revenues? Did you move forward?
I think he's asking the question about the physical environment. Is that, if that's just a stormwater fee, we're only bringing in revenues a hundred thousand, that was the question.
Yeah, a hundred and four thousand, is that? The little green blip?
Oh, those are-
Oh, that was-
Those are expenditures. So what you can see-
It's three million, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand.
That is general government. That's general government. So you can see, if you're looking at the physical environment, the little green, you said a hundred and four thousand, last year, fiscal year-to-date, and this year fiscal date, a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we don't, we haven't seen a lot of significant increases or decreases in our expenditures, other than a slight with respect to transportation, which is just tracking.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, if I might add, what I think you're looking at is the majority of our physical environment expenditures are in our CIP, and not in the general fund. So these are the general operating expenses that Public Works has. I'm sure there's other things added to the physical environment as far as definition in your reporting of accounts, but that's from the general fund. The other items you would see in the CIP as well.
Okay, I guess that's it. So it's an improvement, right?
Yes. Well, actually, we're spending a little more, tracking to spend a little more this year. Some of that can be, you know, this is just as of June thirtieth. Some of our things aren't necessarily regular recurring every month. Certain projects get going different times of the year. So some of these categories don't really lend themselves to monthly comparative. But we do like to look fiscal year-to-date, and we can help identify some trends that way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next slide, we are looking at restricted revenues. And those are actually what's not in our general fund, and they're, you know, not regular recurring, and not available for use for various expenditures. They're restricted for use for things such as roads, parks, specific uses. Building fees are used for, you know, for the code as outlined in Florida statutes. What you see here is that some of our, a lot of these revenues are based upon consumer behaviors, such as building fees, impact fees, you know, as those markets, as people go to draw permits for a new house, as they go to construct new construction where impact fees are applied. So these are, we're seeing some upward trends in that, and that's really a good thing. But again, we can see what's going on around us with respect to the housing market. Those are directly related to that. Our local option gas tax, a line item listed here, increased slightly. Again, those are collected at the state level. I think that that's an indication of our pulling out of the pandemic somewhat with respect to consumption.
Yes, road impact fees, that's a big increase. Can that, is that going to be used for the quadrant, maybe?
The impact fees that we have that are in here, we have it accounted for the increase. What we did is we got with community development, before we drafted the budget, we knew, we've collected most of these through the year. We presented you in July. So we think, and we'll increase the estimate if we need to for our budget purposes, but that's been allocated to your CIP. So if we go through the CIP, and you look at what's allocated with road impact fees, which legally allowed, those are the projects. I believe that project, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that does include some road impact fees. Derek just indicated, yes.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Yep. The next slide compares cash balances. Again, last fiscal year-to-date, and these are balances as compared to the prior fiscal year-to-date. The biggest change that we see is in general fund assigned balance. This is because we have been accumulating some funds for, these are capital projects. These are all allocated to various capital projects from our general fund, our matching grant requirements, or other projects that don't qualify for restricted revenues. Our policy with the city is if we have a capital project, we always look for restricted revenues first, including grants. And when and if they do not qualify for any of those, or the funding's not available, then we utilize general fund revenues to help us satisfy those projects and fund them.
And the debt services, how did we drop down so fast?
That has to do with the fact that when you borrowed some funds, you actually held them in the bank for a little bit of time before you dispersed them for what you intended to use them for. So that's how it goes. You usually, several of your loans, you actually received all the funds upfront, and they were for capital projects, so it took some time to disperse. So specifically, your downtown project worked that way, and some of your other ones. You usually, what you have to do by Florida law, when you sign a big construction project, you have to either have the money in the bank, or you have to have, you know, funds set aside to satisfy that. So you have to get that loan before you can build the road and sign the contract and construct things.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Our last slide, I wanted to call some things that we've noticed to your attention. The last several months, we've seen significantly higher amounts in our half-cent sales tax, our local option gas tax, and our electric franchise fees. And as we've talked about before, again, we think this is a statewide trend. It's, you know, the state economically, we're so fortunate, we're doing well, doing really well. We do have a feeling that these gains, year over year, are, you know, coming back from the pandemic. Everyone has cautious, cautioned us, though, that, you know, it's consumer behavior. So we have to just be flexible and watch if, you know, heaven forbid, something goes a little, little, you know, different way, then we just have to be prepared for that. So we do, the state does budget pretty conservatively, so we're pretty confident about that. But when we tell you there's increases in why they are, we like to let you know that that may not continue forever into the future. And that's my presentation.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, I know Lisa's there as well. We were wondering if you would all like us to provide a more in-depth discussion on the budget at our next council meeting. We provided the information and the updates within the presentation and the PowerPoint that Lisa has provided. It should be a copy in front of you. We're also available to meet one-on-one with any council members to go over any other budget concerns. But we're happy to take the September first meeting and devote more of that time for some additional in-depth information on the budget, as we prep for our two budget hearings.
Thank you, everything.
Sounds good.
Well, then, we will plan to try to keep it a little bit of a layer agenda for the first, so we can focus more in depth on the budget. And Mayor and Council, the other thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to greatly appreciate the work of Lee County staff, and of course, the Lee County Commission for their assistance with the old library. They were very helpful to our staff through the process. We're going to continue to work with them as they work with the state, and we'll see whatever types of leaseback we need to assist while we help the state provide the monoclonal antibody treatment at the old library. Just a reminder, that is available to the public. If they go onto the Florida Department of Health website, they can register for assistance there. It's open from nine to five, and they can get an appointment. Additional information is still on the Lee County website, as well as the Lee County, Florida Department of Health website as well, for resources there. And that's all I have.
Do we have it on our web? Excuse me.
If we don't already, I'm sure we'll get with IT and have it put on, with Laura and her staff, and have it put on any links. Usually, all the links that Lee County provides us, we replace as well.
Arlene, isn't it also open seven days a week, I believe?
Yes.
Correct. Yes. Nine to five, seven days a week. I do know some of the appointments go past five. They try to accommodate as many folks as they can.
If you're qualified, if you can prove you've got COVID, I believe if you walk on, they will serve you. I don't think they'll turn anybody away. You might not, I don't think you have to have a reservation. They'll work you through. They're here to save people's lives, and we're very privileged to have them here in Bonita Springs. I'd like to thank Lee County for the donation of the library, and it was clean. I was really surprised. I thought it would be filled up with bookcases and stuff, but no, it's absolutely clean. And Ray Sandelli was instrumental in that, and I thank him and all the other commissioners for their actions with the library. And it's going to fit in good with our park program and everything else that we're doing here in the city. And thank you. Okay. Mayor, okay, that was my spue. Do you have any things to add to us there, Amy, please?
I just have a couple of personal comments to make, okay? First, I would like to express my concern and prayers for the many in peril, both near and far. I recognize the heartache and challenges of flood victims in Tennessee, and those affected by the earthquake in Haiti. I pause a moment to reaffirm support for our military serving in Afghanistan, working to secure the safe return of our citizens and allies. May all be kept from harm's way, and may no one be left behind. I pause also to recognize our healthcare workers. They are still toiling to keep, to bring the sick to good health. Finally, I express gratitude to the monoclonal antibody treatment site now located in our city, and to Governor Ron DeSantis for his leadership on therapeutics. May God bless America, and God bless Bonita Springs.
Thank you, Amy. That's very nice. Jesse, you have anything to add tonight?
Not much, Mr. Mayor. I would just kind of add on to what Amy said, that, you know, the things going on around the world are crazy right now. And, you know, I know from our congressional office in southwest Florida, we have currently eighty-two people that we're in the process of working with the State Department and trying to get them home. We've had a couple who have actually, a couple families, interpreter, who have been cleared and made it to the airport. We have others who are still in hiding and unable to make it out safely. But, you know, we have, we're very blessed. We have some very good people working on this. And, you know, I know it's keeping my staff up on the federal side, and I know the congressman is deeply concerned specifically with what's going on in Afghanistan right now. So definitely a lot going on there, and a little bit in the water stuff. But I'll give you guys an update on some water stuff next time around. But that's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay, Mike? Any comments for us tonight?
No, Amy said it great. I can't follow up with that.
Thank you. Laura, how about your?
I also have to commend Amy for just summing up what everyone is feeling, and, you know, prayers around the world for all those hurting, and grateful for our governor, for leadership, and also our congressman, who's keeping, you know, the water issue alive and concerned with our folks in Afghanistan. So I'm grateful that we have leaders that are helping for Florida, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, my heart, I just want to say that Lee Health has reported that they have about six-hundred-and-forty-one cases of COVID that they're dealing with, which is putting a tremendous strain on their resources and their people who are treating people. And I just encourage everybody that has not yet had been vaccinated to please rethink that, since the FDA has now approved both Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. They're not therapeutic. What they do is boost your immune system, and your immune system is what's going to get you through this pandemic. Just take advantage of it. So we hope everybody at Lee, that's a patient at Lee Health, gets through this whole thing. And we don't want to see the pandemic get any worse. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Chris. Fred?
Yeah, I'd like to really compliment Amy on summing up the situation. I think it's imperative that we do everything, everything possible, to make sure that no American is left behind, and that no Afghanistan person or family that worked for our government, worked with our military, is left behind.
And our allies.
And we are the first state to have this little thing where we're doing the artificial antibody injections. I think Texas is going to be the second one. The other thing to put it in perspective on Lee Healthcare, two months ago roughly, they were running, they had twenty-seven patients. A month ago, they were up in the middle, one hundred, one hundred and fifty patients, and now we're up at the six forty-plus. So you can see how it's really taken off. And I know they've been, when they are doing their testing, they're running about, for every four tests they run, one is a positive. And I think Lee County's in almost the same thing. So it's a serious situation.
Okay, I also believe that Walgreens and CVS will give you free tests if you don't have insurance. If you do, they'll take, they'll get the money from. We're all in this. We're all vulnerable to it. It's four-shot.
I guess the silver lining is the flu's been eliminated.
What was that?
Nothing.
Nothing, yes. Okay, let's go on and prove the minutes.
Don't move. Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who made that motion first? Please.
I did.
Seconded by Fred. Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Purden?
Jesse, come in.
Aye.
Very good.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Well, I want to compliment Jesse on that round table up in Cape Coral that they had a couple weeks ago, where they had Colonel Kelly from the Corps of Engineers. They had Chauncey Goss, South Florida Water Management, had somebody from the Department of Interior, federal, I believe. They were all talking and all pulling on the same oars to try and help get Lake Okeechobee fixed up. It's going to be a long haul project, but I do think progress is being made.
Well, thank you, Fred. Public comment. Now we need some people from, hey, Bonnie. Bonnie is president of the Historic Society, and a member of the Historic Preservation Board. She's very active in the city, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Bonnie Whitmore, for the record. I am what you would call a content, involved citizen for twenty years in Bonita. And I think it's wonderful that we've acquired a new building without the cost of construction. a new building without the cost of construction. So, I think we need to take time, put it to the best use. We talked about a welcome center. We talked about a museum. We've talked about seniors. So, I think there's a lot of things that we need to take time, maybe have a workshop, have a conversation, because there's so many good opportunities for that. The literacy council could use more space, so we could help the kids with English. So, I just want to make sure, on behalf of people like me, that we take our time and do that.
Let me ask you a question, Bonnie. How much is the Historic Society involved with the Lyles Hotel?
Well, we're involved. We have, we have a lease, lease rent agreement kind of thing with the Lyles. But we definitely would like more space in there. I've contacted Arlene. I've written a letter to her, and she's explained how we should go about it, because I think that area is where people come to see, you know. So, we start our tours, and they want to see what's happening downtown. So, yeah, we're in there, but we could use more space.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, please? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Kai Moran. I'm a thirty-year resident of Benita Springs, the area surrounding Benita Springs. And I'm among the many of us that share this dream of creating a really vibrant and walkable downtown. And I routinely walk that downtown, and I do so often with my kids. And I think for those of us that do that, you'll find that traffic's a real problem down there. There are a lot of heavy trucks that move very quickly on those roads. They create a lot of noise. It's a lot of danger, especially for people that move slowly. They're damaging the great improvements that we put in, the nice pavement stones and the medians and things. And it's very clear that despite the fact that we have forty-one Imperial Parkway, and seventy-five is major north-south thoroughfares, that there's still a lot of through traffic on Old Forty-One. So, we have to rely on that area for walkability. We also rely on it for a lot for outdoor dining. So, whether it's Survey Cafe there today, or whether it's Downtown Coffee, or all the restaurants that are coming, from Bohemian to Ceremony Brewing to Sophie's New Crayberry, and then the food trucks, and then whatever Baron Collier may bring, that's a really important area for us to make sure that the pedestrian is number one. We have a lot of roads in the city, and the, the cars dominate all of those roads. In this one area, especially from Terry to Benita Springs, we need to make sure that the pedestrian can feel comfortable and can, and can be the primary occupant of those roads. Because as those trucks are coming down, bikes are also pushed on those roads. I'm six feet tall. It's not an issue for me. When I have my five-year-old son out there, it's quite scary. So, I know city staff has proposed a number of traffic calming solutions to slow and divert traffic. The time to do that is now, especially with outdoor dining and the importance of that with COVID, and to make that a truly great walkable downtown. So, please prioritize traffic calming for downtown. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Arlene, are you there?
I'll make sure she gets the message.
Yes, I'm, I am here, yes.
Don't we have some improvements coming to that roundabout on Terry Street?
We do. Matt has gotten some recommendations back. We've been able to briefly discuss some of those with Councilmember Corey, whose request that originally was, and we'll be bringing back some recommendations, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're working on it. Okay. Any more public comment? Come on, folks. We sit here all night waiting for you. Okay, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you very much.